Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of the Waverne City Council held here today, Monday, December 10th, at 5:00 p.m. Welcome, everyone. And first off, we're going to do the approval of the minutes of regular council, a strategic planning and priorities meeting held November 26, 2018. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move that, Your Worship.
Do you have a second?
I'll second, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Motion carried. Additions to agenda. Mr. Warren?
Your Worship, none from administration tonight.
Any from the council members? Seeing none, we'll move forward to public hearings and notices. There's nothing. No delegations or proclamation petitions, nothing. Number five is the reports to standing committees. Counselor Van Betje will lead off with the police commission.
Thank you, Your Worship. The regular meeting of the Waverne Police Commission was held on Tuesday, November 27th. First on the agenda was the mayor's report. Chief Pritchard presented his report for the month of October 2018. In October 2018, comparison to October 2017, crimes against person has decreased by seven, crimes against property has decreased by three. Total calls for service have decreased by 46, and the calls for service to the date show an increase of 539, by 539 or 11.2 percent. The council payable report for 2018 was presented and passed. Bylaw enforcement, Chief Pritchard provided a bylaw enforcement activity report for October 2018. He advised recommendations to amend the property maintenance and nuisance abatement bylaw to add in charges to be laid when an offense is identified in addition to an order to clean up. The bylaw amendment was passed at the November 13th regular council meeting. Chief Pritchard presented the October 2018 Humane Society Stats Report. At the end of October, there were 19 dogs and 28 cats at the shelter, and they were working on renewing the Humane Society contract as the current one expires on December 31st, 2018. In unfinished business, during the 2019 budget discussions at the October 30th special meeting, Rob inquired where the chief is at for the photo radar, and the chief stated he was not aware there was, that anything had changed, and the board was still waiting. Therefore, the city clerk Richter provided information from meetings in 2015 where it was discussed, and the last time was on September 28th, 2016, where the chief advised it could be revisited in April 2017. Chief Pritchard advised he has contacted SGI about this, and information will be coming out early in January regarding application process. Chief Pritchard stated the cost for a photo radar camera is over $100,000. In regard to the revenue, the city of Waverne would likely keep approximately 75 percent of this ticketed revenue. Chief Pritchard provided a draft copy of the Waverne Police Service Community Perception Survey to be performed by the University of Regina, as was discussed at the October 16th meeting. Counselor Van Betje inquired if there could be a question under police visibility, asking how the police can be more visible with four to five drop-down choices, as in where does the community think the police should set up regularly, bars, schools, et cetera. The police chief Pritchard advised Director Finance Misswall has devised the police budget needs to be further decreased. The chief provided cuts to the 2019 draft budget approved on October 30th, 2018. Chief Pritchard advised, once his budget is passed, he will work on a three-year budget. Under new business, Chief Pritchard advises application for government funding through the civil forfeiture fund for the purpose of a forensic identification light source system has been approved. This grant is not included in the 2018 budgets, so is a request. The board passes a motion authorizing the chief of police to purchase the equipment in the amount of $26,000. Mayor Roy inquired if there is a maximum number of years members-at-large can be on the board, and city clerk Richter advised, not in the bylaw, but she and the chief will check the governance policy, see if there is anything in there stating that. In inquiries and announcements, city clerk Richter advised Constable Carey and McSherry came to youth council in October and were very well received. Counselor Van Betje inquired if a resident has a complaint against police, how do they go about filing this complaint? Chief Pritchard stated that on the Waverne Police website, there is a link to the Public Complaints Commission, and Chief Pritchard will speak to the city PR coordinator to also put this on the city website. Meeting was adjourned.
Any comments? I just want to add to their, for point of clarification, this grant that we receive on all the drug forfeiture money that is given, we get money back out of that onto there. This year, it was $26,000, which is going to go towards some improvements in forensic equipment, getting so that we can do better identification and fingerprints and such. So that is one of the things that helps along the way, as the federal government is cutting back on a lot of things within the policing that they're going to start pushing down, such as expert witnesses and that, that we have to pay for ourselves where they were providing before, so there becomes more expense. So we, as the police commissioner, are going to start dealing with this with other police governance boards to try to figure out how we're going to handle that situation. Next thing that's on the agenda, we have the, I guess, I just have to have a motion to accept and file? Do we need that? No? Then we're just going to make note that it's received and filed. With this one, we go on to the consent agenda. The WTP report, do it, please.
Yes, Your Worship. So just highlights a report provided by engineering in Narakashta, new reservoir and plant 200 upgrade updates, so about 8 percent of civil work completed, and the contractors in the process to install pumps and pipe assembly, electrical installation is in progress, so that's all for the new reservoir. For plant 200, work has been awarded, and the contractor has started the work. Review of instrumentation drawings and submitted feedback has come back from ACOM, and they intend monthly meetings for this, and they've awarded successful layers to all the chemical supply companies as we did at the last council meeting. Other highlights from this as well, just going through the stuff about the PDWA that we went through on November 15th, that everything's back to normal following the PDWA, and then also just an update on Nickel Lake. They went through and said that the levels dropped to 47 centimeters from full level, which is a normal process, and the city consumed about 86.6 million liters during November.
Very good. Any questions? None for council, so again, that should be noted that it has been received and filed.
I'd like to make a motion.
Want to make a motion on that one?
I'd like to make the motion that the water treatment plant report from November 2018 be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
I'll call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions, council payable?
Your Worship, I'll step out as I have interest in this one.
Your Worship, I'd like to move that the purchases in the amount of $2,30981.48 from November 23rd to December 6th, 2018 be passed for payment.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. This is a council payable pecuniary interest, is that?
The pecuniary interest is actually the one that Counselor Chessel was declaring on, so we'll do that motion, and then he can come back in the room.
Okay. Do that motion, please.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $1,251.29 dated December 6th, 2018, where pecuniary interest has been disclosed, be passed for payment.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Any discussion on that one? No? It's all good? So, call the question. All in favor? As we resume here, we have the introduction of bylaws. City clerk Richter, if you do the bylaw?
Yes, Your Worship. On November 26th, council gave first reading to the council procedures bylaw, just making a few minor changes as had been stated at the November 28th meeting. So if council has no further changes or additions to that bylaw, I would recommend second and final reading tonight.
Do you have second reading, please? Motion?
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2018-3390, being the council procedures bylaw for the city of Waverne, be read a second time.
Second?
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Third reading?
Your Worship, that bylaw 2018-3390, being the council procedure bylaw for the city of Waverne, be read a third time.
Second?
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. Moving forward, bylaw 2018-3392, Leisure Services Commission, city manager Warren?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. When we went through our strategic plan this year in September, we did a review of committees. This is one of the committees that we did review. We went through the process of seeing what the best interest of Leisure Services and the Facility Advisory Committee. Decision was made to combine both the Facilities Advisory Committee and the Leisure Services Commission to one committee. A lot of cross-information is coming between those two groups, and it's just going to be a little more of an effective way to do that. So some key things within this revised bylaw is, one, there'll be seven members, two of who will be city counselors, and five of who will be citizens-at-large. This committee will serve as, one, the Leisure Services Commission, two, Facilities Advisory Committee, and then three, they'll do also the Heritage Advisory Review Committee. So pretty much what's happening is all the duties that were happening between those two groups are just being combined into one bylaw and one board for that. So, any questions? So, to council.
Well, first motion then, both.
Thank you, Worship. I'm prepared to make a motion that bylaw 2018-3392, being the Leisure Service Commission and Facilities Advisory bylaw for the city of Waverne be read the first time.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Any questions? If there's no discussion, then, call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
Thank you, Worship. I make a motion that the bylaw 2018-3392, being the Leisure Service Commission and Facility Advisory bylaw for the city of Waverne be read the second time.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? No discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
Make a motion that bylaw 2018-3392, being the Leisure Service Commission and the Facility Advisory bylaw for the city of Waverne be given the third reading at this meeting.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
And finally, Your Worship, I make a motion that bylaw 2018-3392, being the Leisure Service Commission and the Facility Advisory bylaw for the city of Waverne be read the third time and passed.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Final discussion? Nothing? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Moving forward, bylaw 2018-3394, Arts Council. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Your Worship. So once again, we did a review of committees, and the Waverne Arts Council was reviewed as well. This is a minor change to the committee. Previously, it was 10 members, one of which was a council member and nine which was at large, so we're making a change where we're recommending that it goes to no council members on that board and nine members at large. There'll still be a subcommittee of leisure services and report back to that committee, but no larger changes towards what that committee is and how they act within the community.
Do you have a motion? Mr. Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2018-3394, being the bylaw to establish the Waverne Arts Council, be read a first time.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? No discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Second reading, please.
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2018-3394, being the bylaw to establish the Waverne Arts Council, be read a second time.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
No discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Third reading.
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2018-3394, being the bylaw to establish the Waverne Arts Council, be given three readings at this meeting.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? No discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Final reading.
Thanks, Your Worship. I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2018-3394, being the bylaw to establish the Waverne Arts Council, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that one. I'll say, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Moving on, there's no unfinished business. New business, we have a request for extension, Seven GB Enterprises. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Your Worship. So councils receive requests from Seven GB Enterprises, Inc., to have an extension of their current service agreement to September 30th of 2019. A little preamble on that is that back in July of 2017, a discussion with you as council about a three-phase process for this. They already completed their first phase. They finished that in September of 2018. Now what they're asking for is extension of their service agreement for phases two and three, which are stating in this letter that they'll probably have completed in 2019. One thing for this request, there's some requests that was put in for the last service agreement, and some things I request council to put in this as well, that the developer and the consultant are to report on the progress monthly to the city of Waverne. Right now, we're not receiving that, but I think that's something strong that I suggest council ask for that from these guys. Another one is, no securities will be released or reduced until a full completion of all three phases has occurred and has been approved.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that the request of Seven GB Enterprise to extend their current service agreement for the development of the Douglas Heights subdivision from October 2018 to September 30th, 2019 be approved.
I'll second that, Your Worship. Discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Worship. Matthew, what is the service agreement that we're extending? Is it a timeframe for them just to complete more work, and if so, what is that work?
I cannot answer this time. I don't have that information with me for the service agreement. I can bring that back to council from our information.
Okay, so, you know, as we all know, the development, not only in that one, but other developers are struggling with progress because of the economy, so I was just curious of what that detail does, what part of the extension, so.
Yeah. Based on the layer that I have provided to you guys, it's just asking for an extension on what the current agreement is in two additional years.
Okay.
But the details of what's within the service agreement, I do not have with me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. Counselor Wheeler, in your motion, you didn't mention specifically the things that the city manager had suggested. Did you want that in the motion, the monthly meetings?
I would request that that's included.
Right, okay.
Do you want to make a motion to amend, then?
You could just amend. If the mover and the second are agree to make those additions, then we can just include it in the original motion.
I would agree to make the revisions.
I would agree as a second, Your Worship. Very good.
Thank you.
Yep. And those two provisions are?
One, that developer and his consultants are to provide progress reports monthly to the city of Waverne, and number two is no securities will be released or reduced until the full completion of all three phases has occurred and been approved.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chessel?
One question, Matthew. What are the consequences if we don't see a monthly report?
That's council's decision, what you guys want to do with that, and I'll leave that in your hands for decisions for that. For us, it's more of a want to see where they're going with the project and to show progress of where they're going towards that. But through discretion as council, what the consequences would be, but for us, it's more of showing us where those are. In the last request, that was known to them, and the only one that we did receive was one for September of this year, just showing this is where we're at at this point, but was not receiving the monthly.
Mr. Van Betje?
Yeah, a couple points. I guess, yeah, as far as we could put in there that it could result in the elimination of the extension if the reports aren't received, and then, as Counsel Bailey brought up, I think I'd be comfortable to vote in favor of extending it without knowing the details, because I think we extended it last time, and it's a standard subdivision agreement, so I don't think we need to know the details.
My recollection is, it's all in place. I just kind of wanted to see with this addition and timeframe, if anything at that had changed, and so we're working on what we allowed him to do and how to do it and everything, that's fine.
Do you want to add that in the amendments, too, that with the consequences of the termination of the extension, if you don't meet these things?
We're almost ready for a new motion, aren't we, Brad? Counselor Wheeler? Yeah.
Your Worship, we could just simply make sure with your advice that we include it when we have them sign off with those items. I don't know that the details of the agreement would have to be in the motion, but we understand what council is directing, and the city manager could include it with his, with the agreement when they sign.
Yeah, that's fair. Yep.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Home occupation. Amanda Kaufman, if you would, please.
An application has been received from Jennifer Hill to operate a counseling business from her residence at 26 Fourth Avenue Southeast. Legally described as Lot 10, Block 8, Plan 0888, located in R2 Zone in the Waverne Residence Incorporated subdivision. The business will operate during the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday by appointment only. This would be considered a controversial use, as the occupation involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow, parking in the driveway will be available to clients. Home-based occupations are permitted in R2 but are generally deemed controversial, requiring public notification and council review. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on November 15th to all neighbors within 75 meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given until Monday, December 3rd. No objections or concerns were received. Therefore, staff recommends council approve the home occupation at 26 Fourth Avenue, subject to the following conditions: That no person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying out the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site shall not exceed .092 meters squared and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard area. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. The owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking for clients. No more than one client per appointment shall be at the dwelling at any given time between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m. And a city of Waverne business license shall be obtained prior to the operation of the home occupation.
Your Worship, with that, I'd like to move that the application for a home occupation from Jennifer Hill to operate a counseling business from her residence at 26 Fourth Avenue Southeast in Waverne, Lot 10, Block 8, Plan 0888, be approved with the conditions provided.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. Amanda, I just, curious, because, and I don't know what kind of business Ms. Hills, sorry, what kind of counseling business Ms. Hill is doing, but is there a need for her to be in compliance with a regulatory body beyond that, if it's health or anything?
I am not sure, but I can check into that for you. I'm not sure of the specifics of the counseling service, so.
Okay, I just don't want to leave us open for any comebacks if we don't ensure compliance.
Yeah, definitely. I can look into that and include it as a condition if it's required.
Thank you.
Without being said, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Discretionary use permit, church on 96 17th Street.
We have received a proposed development for a church, which was submitted by Curtis Barassa, owner of 96 17th Street. Legally described as Lot 1, Block 10, Plan 76R 05049, which is currently an empty office building. Zoning for the site is light industrial, therefore churches or religious institution is considered discretionary. The proposal is to convert the office building into a church building. There's a large yard and sufficient space to meet the minimum for off-street parking requirements. The light industrial zone is designated to provide a wide range of industrial uses and services requiring small sites with small amount of outdoor storage, but excluding those which may be offensive by reason of noise, smell, or other forms of pollution. The site does meet the minimum site requirements, as well as setbacks and parking requirements for the proposed use. As a discretionary use, we are required to send out a neighborhood notice to all residents within 75-meter radius of the proposed development to give them an opportunity for input or voice concerns. Notices were sent out on November 14th with no objections or concerns received. In recognizing the proposed site is located in an industrial zone, it is also adjacent to residential neighborhoods where churches are permitted, and there is no anticipated negative effect in the light industrial zone due to the redevelopment. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the church development at 96 17th Street, subject to the following conditions: Off-site development levies in the amount of $4,648 shall be due upon issuance of the development permit. The levy was calculated due to the change in use and the increased impact to sewer and water, as this building has been vacant for five years and no previous levies were collected. The owner or developer shall contact a Class 3 building official to complete an inspection and advise if the building meets minimum standards for an assembly use under the National Building Code. The building will be required to have barrier-free access, emergency lighting, exit signs, panic hardware, depending on the occupant load, portable fire extinguishers, to name a few of the requirements. The owner and the developer or developer shall contact the fire department to ensure the building meets the minimum requirements under the National Fire Code. The owner or developer shall contact Saskatchewan Health Authority to ensure that the building meets any requirements under the Health Authority for assembly use occupancy. Building permit will be required for any renovations or alterations. Minimum off-street parking requirements shall be one stall per 10 seats and one stall per 20 square meters of assembly area. All areas not used for parking stalls shall be landscaped in accordance with Section 15 of the zoning bylaw.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'll make a motion that the discretionary use permit application from Curtis Barassa to convert a contractor shop into a church building at 96 17th Street Northeast, Lot 1, Block 10, Plan 76R 05049, be approved with conditions provided.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Mr. Mickle?
I have a question, Amanda. I don't, hopefully, no intent to throw you under the bus. The building has been vacant for five years. Have taxes been paid?
Yes.
In full?
Yes.
So just to give me, give myself a perspective of what we're talking about, is the new Holland building, is that what it is? Yeah, thanks.
Curtis is here, if you have any questions. Yeah.
I guess on the subject of taxes, then, once it becomes a church building, then do we, is that become tax exempt?
If the church is registered federally with the government, they would be exempt to property taxes. Currently, the taxes are roughly $11,000 on that site. I'm not sure if the church is becoming the owner of the property or if it's leased, but they would have to talk to Teresa about the exemption.
If it's just being leased, then they still pay the taxes.
Yes, as far as I'm, yeah.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay, there we go. Inquiries and announcements, anything? Just our meeting, there's going to be, we're going to have another council meeting next week to meet two council meetings here per month, and so tune in again at 5:00 for that one. The Ag Society is having their annual meeting, are they not, tomorrow night?
Yes.
And that will be where?
That'll be at the rink, I guess, or the egg building office, yes.
At what time?
I believe at 7:00.
7:00?
Way to put me on the spot, but I think 7:00.
Anything for, so if anybody's interested in the Ag Annual AGM, there's also talk that, if you can remember when the, let me talk about the meeting. Communothon, Telthon? United Way? Communiton, telethon, United Way, they're having their annual general meeting, and there's talk about disbanding that. And that's Wednesday? Where's that? And again, look on, Discover Waverne, probably they'll have that at the allegiance, but that is another one where you should be, people should be aware of, so if they're, because the United Way is looking to disband that completely. Mr. Justin, nothing, nothing more? With that, there's no notice of motion, request for clarification, nothing, committee of the whole, nothing, and that moves us to adjournment, and we adjourn this meeting tonight. Thank you.[1777.73][1777.73][music]